Two in one day.
I know. You're so good to me.
It's all life's work.
I keep you busy.
No, you are a cake block. That's a whole other.
I don't know, dude seems so jolly and happy and...
Well, you know.
You know. Maybe it's the drugs, I don't know. It's good.
Calling to order the Monday, July 22nd, 2024, meeting of the 40th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Mayor Protam Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Hunnen.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Vilani.
Here.
Mayor Dean.
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Woo, that's a course. Mayor Protam with support from Councilmember Patterson. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hunnen.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes, the agenda has been approved, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've now come to our citizens' comments portion of the evening. This is where you can come and tell us what's on your mind and in your heart about items that are not on tonight's agenda. When you approach the microphone, please direct your comments to the chair. State your name and city of residence. Council will not engage you in discussion, but it doesn't mean we don't care. If your concern needs to be followed up with by a member of council or city staff, there's a table outside the store where you can leave your contact information and somebody will get back with you. You have three minutes to let us know your thoughts.
Hi, I'm here about the short-term rentals specifically.
Tell us, tell us your name.
My name is Sandra Porter.
Hey Sandra, and you live where?
I live on Cumberland.
You're in Berkeley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm calling about the short-term rental, especially the one I'm sure Mr. Hunnen knows, at 2987 Cumberland. Listed as a Berkeley resort, sleeps 11 with a mafia-themed theater room that has had the police out there several times. The house, it's a party house. I get it, if I rented it, I'd want to have a party too. But it's 10 feet from my house. His pool is 10 feet from my fence. If people are out there at 3 o'clock in the morning just talking, I can hear him in my bedroom. I can't keep my windows open. Um, one of these city ordinances is a nuisance. It says, "in any way renders other person insecure in the life or use of property." I feel insecure when I've got practically 11 strangers every other night walking near my house, by my house, I don't know who they are, they could be carrying glocks, they could be carrying golf clubs. I don't know who they are. Essentially, another one is it interferes with the comfortable enjoyment and life of my property. Another, uh, these are in section 78-1. I don't feel comfortable going in my backyard when people are essentially partying right next door. Now, my other neighbors should have been here tonight, but I don't think they think you'll do anything about it. However, I know Mr. Hunnen has spoke to Nick and he is had a family emergency tonight. But his note here is there's absolutely no state law limiting the local government from putting restrictions on short-term rentals. And they should be based on present, not potential laws. Because that's what I've been hearing, it's a potentially going to be voted in legislature that these bans are not going to be appropriated. But that's been going on for four years and they've lost every time that they, there was a fight against it. So that is my complaint. And I'm hoping the city will think about it, do something, because people are already talking about houses next door to you. And I'd also like to know if anybody here in the city has a short-term rental. I want to know why it's being pushed aside.
Thank you, Ms. Porter.
Good evening, Joel Olferts, Berkeley. The permit policy that's on the agenda next month suggests that anything less than a 20-by-8-foot driveway is a hardship for that one car. So if I have a 19-foot-long driveway, that's a hardship, as I understand it. The reason I bring this up, a car down the street from me is usually hanging out into the sidewalk, they have a larger SUV. But if that's a hardship, shouldn't my super-long driveway that I can put five cars in be a hardship? Because getting that fifth car out would be almost impossible compared to their two-car-wide apron that's 19 feet in length. There was one other component I wasn't too happy about was the... I can't recall, sorry. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Olferts.
Good evening, Madam Counsel. And, um, thank you, uh, I sent a letter in earlier today.
What is your name, please, and city of residence?
Steve Tomkoviac, Fair Housing Center Metropolitan Detroit. My city of residence is Oak Park, I've had children. All these children graduated from Berkeley High, they've been involved in, you know, socks, soccer and everything else. I'm really part of this community, but that's not why I'm here. I'm here at Fair Housing Center Metropolitan Detroit, we're based in Detroit. We've been existence since 1977, we serve four counties, Wayne, Oakland, McComb... Wayne, Oakland, McComb and St. Clair Counties, close to 40% of state population. I've got a fair housing resource map on my, uh, letter, which shows that we're HUD-funded to make sure that there's equality of housing opportunities in connection with any federal, state, local law, and that's what, that's why I'm here. I'm here because of the planned urban development for the Columbia. It's on your consent agenda, M6424. Problem, kind of shocking from a fair housing standpoint, it proposes 57 studio-in-one-bedroom apartments and it does have no two-bedroom, three-bedroom. It is exclusionary when it comes to families with children, they have larger family sizes, they cannot fit overall within a studio-in-one-bedroom apartment unit. That's in violation of fair housing requirements. I have the breakdown on that, you know, statistics or whatnot to show that. So, you're subject, as a, you know, municipality, subject to the requirements of the Fair Housing Act. So is the developer, so is everybody associated with this project. Secondly, and this was raised, the, uh, Planning Commission did not discuss this part of it, but I also suggested that there be set-aside units for low-income, below-market rental rates. That wasn't done, the Planning Commission said, "Well, we don't see that provision in our ordinance, so therefore we don't have the authority to do that." I disagree, I think this is a good opportunity for you to have certain set-aside units for low-income members of the community. But that's all I'm going to say about it. It just needs to be reconsidered. We're happy to assist. I do trainings for Sterling Heights, Warren, Pontiac, Detroit, I could name all the municipalities. The reason we don't have a lot of contact with you is that we work largely through CDBG jurisdictions and you're within Oakland County CDBG jurisdiction, so most of our contacts are with Oakland County. But it doesn't mean that you're not an important part of the community, obviously you are. And again, our mission is to make sure we are serving the interests of all protected groups. Families with children is a protected group under both Fair Housing Act and Michigan Illinois Larson Civil Rights Act. And as presented, I believe that this program, that this planned development violates fair housing requirements as to familial status.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name's Jerry Naumann, I'm resident of Berkeley, Michigan, and that. First off, I'd like to thank city council for all their work they do to help the residents of our city getting along and helping them out. My family's got a long history, we've been here since 1945, I'm the third generation, there's five generations of the family that's lived here. Getting back to the interest of the residents here, I live on Griffith Street, the first block north of 12 Mile. It used to be a fire lane with parking only on one side and the parking's been removed. The no-parking signs have been removed on the west side of the street. And what that has caused over the past six months is nothing but aggravation of the residents and also some accidents on our streets. And it's not the same street I used to know. Years, or years ago, there was a study done by an engineering company that was hired by the city to study the fire lane parking of where we can remove these signs and allow parking on both sides of the street. The problem is, this engineering company did not take into considerations the width of vehicles nowadays and the curb lines. On Griffith, the street is 27 feet wide from curb to curb. It is a law in the city that you can be one foot away from the curb line. Well, both vehicles are parked across from each other and they're a foot away from the curb line. That means they would only have eight feet in between the two vehicles because the standard of a federal law actually, the width of a vehicle is eight-and-a-half feet wide. So if they're on a street that starts at 27 feet, it could go down to 25 feet because they can be a foot away from the curb. Therefore, if they're 17 feet and they're taking up, that only leaves eight feet left for a vehicle to go down the street. What's happened on the street probably about two months ago, I had a trailer sitting out there and there were some tree cutters across the street from me in a vehicle and a FedEx truck tried coming down in between us. Unfortunately, my trailer lost the battle, it did thousands of dollars of damage to my trailer. It could be fixed, luckily hit the trailer and not the truck. I was compensated for the damage by FedEx, FedEx Company on it. But what I don't understand is why they've taken the street parking away from us. What I did in the block of Griffith, I went around, got petitions signed by all the citizens on our street. Most of them that were home. I have that petition, I would like to present to you, plus I also have the pictures of the accident that took place on the street and how it was unable for a garbage truck to get down the street after the accident took place because of the width of the road. So I, this point, I'd like you guys to consider this and see if you could come up with a resolution that would help everyone on our street be able to get down our street because if we're parked out there, our cars are parked out there, a four-door truck does not have the ability to turn into a driveway because of the cars are too close together and you're either going to have to run over the neighbor's street.
Thank you, Mr. Naumann. If you want to leave those with the clerk?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any other public comments?
Hello, City Council. My name is Michael Turner from Wiltshire Street in Berkeley. And I just wanted to, uh, say, give you a quick background. We had a adolescent hawk that was stuck in our neighbor's, uh, vertical privacy fence. And so we, my wife happened to go out there and, uh, was watering her plants and then she noticed that the, there was something strange hanging there, looked like fur or something to her, so. I came on, the hawk was still alive, so we rescued it, it was on the evening of July 5th. And then, um, the next morning, our neighbor called the animal control officer who, he said, "Well, you know, I, I'm not scheduled to work today, but I'll make some phone calls." So he calls and he found that the Howell Nature Center would take the birds, so. He showed up about 20 after 9:00 and, uh, rescued the bird, took him off with his day off out there, so. I just wanted to, uh, show my appreciation for the dedicated, um, our public servant office, or public service personnel here. And I've seen a police officer, uh, just recently at our next-door neighbor's house. They had a medical emergency and they, they showed up and it was very professional and I really appreciate them. So I just wanted to, if the city council can pass the word, uh, to our public servants, for I really appreciate all their devotion to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. And our chief is here tonight, so I'm sure he's heard all of that and he will pass that on.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? Okay, I'm closing public, oh, did you want to say something? Come on up.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Lisa Barrera, I'm a resident, uh, on Wiltshire in Berkeley. And, um, council members, I think you've received an email from me over the last couple days and perhaps from a couple of my neighbors. It's about the parking on Wiltshire, which is on one side of the street only, and some of the issues we're facing and receiving, um, city services like, um, street sweeping and trash pickup, leaf pickup, and things like that. And, um, so we sent our emails and the request is that in addition to all the other parking considerations, that the circumstances on streets like Wiltshire where parking is only on one side be considered because they are a little bit, um, different than perhaps streets where parking is permitted on both sides. In our case, in our block in particular, um, there are a few of us residents on the north side of the street where, um, vehicles belonging to our neighbors on the south side are consistently parked on our curb, which is permitted and that's fine. The issue, um, is raised when we're not able to get our city services consistently or effectively. And by effectively, I mean without having to call the city or confront our neighbors, which nobody likes to do. So, um, we're asking that in addition to everything else with the parking, that the language in section, I think it's proposed section 12298, which is the on-street parking prohibition section. And it is clarifying that there's no parking on the street during a snow emergency. And also when posted, um, when it's posted with temporary signage or other notification by the city. So the question for us is what that temporary signage looks like and will it be consistently applied? We did see the no-parking during leaf pickup last autumn in some streets on our neighborhood. But we didn't always see it applied on our block. And at times, either consistently or not at all, and so we, those leaf pickup issues continued. So we're just asking for, um, consideration and for operationally this ordinance to be, um, put into effect so that the signage, the temporary signage, is something that goes hand in glove with it so that if that's going to be the method that, um, residents are able to get effective services and consistently, um, receive those services, that, that signage is also consistently put out and put out on our street in particular and on our block so that that side of the street is free of cars during those times. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, have you received any email communication to be entered into tonight's record?
We did receive an email, um, from the gentleman who spoke earlier, from the Fair Housing Commission, I believe he summarized his.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm closing public comments. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 40th regular city council meeting on Monday, June 17th, 2024. Two, warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1400. Three, motion number M6224, matter of approving the Flagstar Government Banking Public Unit Resolution and Master Signature Authorization Agreement, changing the authorized signers on the bank account to the Clerk, Treasurer and Finance Director. Four, motion number M6324, matter of approving a proposal from Hubbell, Roth and Clark for fiscal year 2024, 2025, GIS Support Services and the not-to-exceed amount of $28,000. Funding for this project would primarily come from accounts 592-536-821-000, Water Engineering, and 443-901-821-000, Road Project Engineering. But other accounts may be utilized based on actual usage. Five, motion number M6424, matter of approving a planned unit development agreement for a multi-family development on the east side of Coolidge Highway, south of Cambridge Road and north and south of Columbia Road. The applicant design, design Haas Architecture on behalf of WJ Ventures LLC, 2465 Columbia, 2468 Columbia, and 2476 Columbia, and 2475 Cambridge is requesting the approval. Six, motion number M6524, matter of receiving and filing an advisory opinion in response to alleged ethics violation under section 2-40 of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances. And seven, motion number M6624, matter of approving the appointment to boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion may be against Councilmember Hunnen?
Support.
With support from Mayor Protam Gavin. Are there any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
No.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Recognitions, presentations, a matter of receiving any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please read item number two on tonight's agenda.
Presentation, a matter of receiving a presentation on the revolving energy fund and sustainability efforts.
Mr. Geiner.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. One of the things we're trying to do with our agendas from time to time, especially when we have what, I won't say it because I don't want to jinx it.
Don't, don't say it.
Um, is to keep council apprised on various policies and initiatives that you all have enacted. One, uh, early on when I, uh, started here, there was a question on what's the status of this, what's going on with it? And, uh, so tonight, we're going to be doing a brief presentation on the city's revolving energy fund, which is still a little early, uh, in its existence. And tonight, to present that is our facilities manager, Alex Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Good evening. So I have a quick presentation, kind of to refresh everyone's memory on the revolving energy fund and some of the, um, things we've already done and things we hope to get done in the future with, uh, not just this fund, but other sustainability efforts. So, bear with me, here's the first, uh, there we go, okay. So what is a revolving energy fund, just real simple, kind of, um, it's, is it's defined in our, uh, 2019 energy plan, it's a self-sustaining financial mechanism for implementing clean energy projects. So, building off of that, this is kind of a graphic to kind of show how the fund will work when, um, we get it kind of operating here. So we're going to have some seed funding, which is in the 2024, 25 budget, so we will have funding in this, um, moving forward. And we'll kind of, uh, highlight some projects and pick some projects that we're going to do our investing in. And as they are up and running, we will take the savings, energy savings, reinvest those into the energy fund and put them into the next round of energy projects we want to move forward with. So it's kind of just a big carousel of reinvestment and energy savings, so. Projects we'll be selecting are expected to have a payback, with 80% of the savings back into the fund and hopefully will be paid back within a five-year period. That's kind of the guidelines that were set out in 2019 and we want to kind of adhere to those. The remaining 20% of the cost savings will return to whichever department or account funded said projects. Some of the steps that were taken in 2019, just to kind of go over, were to define the goals and objectives, identify seed money, define the structure of the RAF, which in, um, the 2019 plan was to quick, have a quick return on investment and make sure they're self-sustaining projects. The, the decision criteria, um, moving forward, we're going to kind of tie this in with our capital improvement plan as well so that everything capital, not everything, a lot of the capital projects we'll be moving forward with will take into this energy plan as well so that we'll make sure we'll make good decisions that'll affect the, the bottom line and the energy savings as well. And then monitoring the data and the energy reductions will all be, we'll make sure we have measurable data that can report and then we'll have the, the money at the end of the day to show that, hey, we're saving this much, this is going back into said fund. And then the goals on the right there are from the 2019 plan, I pulled those just to kind of show what was established, um, in that plan. Some of the nuances that are specific to the revolving energy fund is the focus on the audience. Are we going to focus on one facility at a time, municipality-wide? And then maybe at some point, it, put this plan out where it can maybe help residents or small businesses once it gets up to a certain level. Uh, the seed money, like I had mentioned, is included in the 24, 25 budget. I believe it's $20,000 that we're starting the fund with, so that's something to get going on. Repayment period, um, if we decide we want to add grants or loans to this, that's kind of something we'll take into consideration. And then the percent of savings returns I mentioned will be hopefully 80% back into the fund. Costs and energy savings will all be estimated moving into the projects and then once they are up and running, we'll be monitoring them closely and then we'll have sustainable numbers to share with everyone. Fund management will be either one person, myself, or a team. We kind of don't, since we don't have a, a project ready to roll yet, I'm not really sure if it's going to be just on me to kind of manage that project moving forward, or there'll be a team effort involved there with some of the other directors and staff. Our criteria for decisions, I mentioned, will be kind of in, involved with the, the capital improvement plan and we'll kind of prioritize projects that will benefit both sides of that. And if there's any legal barriers, obviously we'll tackle those in the beginning, so there's no issues moving forward. Some of our benefits, um, they're going to finance innovative energy projects that would go unfunded, um, achieve energy costs and cost savings, again, referring back to the 2019 plan, this is all really spelled out in that. And then we'll increase awareness through staff and the public about energy savings and ways they can, you know, get on board and kind of do the same things we're doing. And I got pictures of our, our first two chargers there at the library that we're all, we're very proud of and are getting used a lot. Which will bring me to my next slide here, I, some of the stuff we've accomplished so far, um, in my almost three years here. The three EV charging stations, two at the library, one at Oxford Park. As of this morning, we've had 2,108 charging sessions from 721 unique drivers between the, the six ports in the city, so. Pretty impressive numbers for just over a year of, of use. We finished converting all the facility lights, baseball fields and tennis courts to LED. So we're saving some money there, there's a lot of savings, um, happening there and better product on the fields and the lights are a lot better than they've ever been. We've updated our wiring between city hall and public safety, which I don't know if a lot of people know, they are connected and we had some major problems, uh, and I believe we did that about a year ago. And we have a sub-meter installed here now at city hall so we can monitor actually how much each building is using instead of just seeing one giant number for electrical use. Our HVAC improvement project is moving forward. We've actually had some small things start working at the public safety building. They've delivered some equipment and some of the initial wiring is starting, so we're slowly but surely revving that up. And once we get that project off the ground and, and, and the, the public safety department is up and running, I, I expect substantial, substantial savings to what we're using now for the, the heating and cooling over there. And then something I'm especially proud of is through our third year in a row, we have, uh, reached gold in the Michigan Green Communities Challenge, which is a state-funded challenge, uh, by Eagle and the MEDC that kind of promotes, um, green and sustainability things throughout municipalities in the state. We're one of 62 communities in the state that achieved gold and like I said, it's our third year. So we're pretty proud of that with some of the, the things we've, uh, got done so far. Some of the next steps, um, we're going to complete facility assessments. I believe the last one was completed in 2014, so we're due for some facility assessments. And within those assessments, we'll be taking a look at next step of energy savings and things we can do when we do the improvements to keep in, in line with this fund and with the energy plan from 2019. As I had mentioned, the capital improvement plan, um, that's going to take in consideration, we're going to kind of tie these things together so everything, every decision we make is going to... going to have this in mind. And then we're always looking for sources of funding, grants, anything like that, which we've been pretty successful on some of them. So we're always looking for grants and state, local, any kind of funding we can find that'll help move these projects further. That's all I have, so if there's any questions, I'll gladly, if I kind of blew through that, sorry.
No, that's all right. Thank you for this informative and positive presentation and your commitment to the city's energy goals. I know this has been a long time coming. I know that Mayor Protem Gavin has been working on this since 2019. And he was instrumental in bringing the no-cost energy plan for the city, which is of critical importance. And when you mentioned earlier about like, you know, well, where's this at, where's that at? And I know we've all been kind of like waiting to hear more about the status of this program. So all great news, and I'm excited that it's coming to fruition. So thank you for all of that. Any questions or discussion from Council? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you to you, DPW, Community Development, all the folks that helped make these kinds of things happen, right? It's fantastic. Congratulations on the gold.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
And just for folks at home, it's the numbers that you shared about the EV chargers are especially impressive because it's not free, right?
Right.
The city does not pay for that, there's no tax dollars that are going into that. So folks are using those and paying the appropriate rates.
Correct.
So that they can charge their vehicles. And while they're charging those vehicles, they're doing cool things in the city.
Exactly.
You know, they're walking up and down Coolidge, they're having fun at the park, things like that. So it's a win-win for the community in the fact that, you know, they have an opportunity, availability for charging, you know, to top it off if that's, you know, or that kind of thing. And they're able to experience and enjoy what Berkeley has to offer. Of course, obviously, the residents already know how awesome Berkeley is.
Right.
But having these things show up on the maps, like the little applications.
Yep.
That tell you where chargers are, that draws folks into the city. And so I think that's especially noteworthy. And I just wanted to, again, thank you and the team, all of you guys, for the hard work that you do to help make these things happen. And it's, I'm looking forward to winning the gold again next year.
Yeah, me too, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Mayor Protem Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thanks for the comments, and thank you, Alex, for bringing this forward. I'm very excited to see it on the cusp of implemented, to not only reduce not only the city's carbon footprint, but also reduce costs to taxpayers in the form of energy savings. So I think it's really good city fiscal policy and good environmental policy, so I applaud the efforts that you've done so far and excited about what's next, so thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, please read item number three on tonight's agenda.
Ordinance number O 724, matter of considering the second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend section 106-36 damage and obstruction prohibited generally. Section 122-92, establish use of off-street parking spaces, and section 122-94, parking in residential districts between certain hours, and add section 122-96, presumption from ownership. Section 122-97, vehicle abandonment, and section 122-98, on-street parking prohibitions of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to update the policies and procedures for on-street parking and parking in municipal lots.
Is there a motion to approve O 0724?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Hannon?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Geinzer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. As you all know, we've been talking about this ordinance for quite some time. At the last meeting, we had our first reading on this ordinance. Ultimately, there was a lot of consensus, but there were some areas where there was requested changes to the ordinance, which Director Kaplansky will go through. And lastly, I would just say that keep in mind, as we're considering potential approval of this ordinance, the on-street parking policy that we're continuing to work through is a step that would come later. We had a work session on it tonight that will be kind of fleshing out the feedback we received from Council. If this ordinance is approved tonight, we would be bringing back any particular changes that came out from that feedback at the next meeting. So with that, I'd like to turn over to Director Kaplansky.
Thank you. Okay, I'll be fairly brief, because this ordinance that comes to you this evening is largely in the form that it came to you at the first reading. There were two changes that Council requested that have been made. One is that the on-street parking policy, which again would be for later review and approval by Council, has been added as something that does need to come to Council for approval. So previously, that was a staff document. This would now become a document approved by Council. The other change that was made is that any misrepresentations in applying for any sort of parking permit would be a civil infraction punishable by a fine up to $500. And that was also a change requested by Council. Otherwise, the ordinance is exactly the same as what you saw as part of the first reading. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from Council? Councilmember Baker?
Hi, thank you. And thanks, mostly just gratitude for the work that you and the team have done on continuing to advance thoughtful policy ideas and ordinance structures so that we can have this dialogue. And again, for folks at home, the intent here is not to remove the on-street parking ban. I know there's a different way to phrase it, that we will still have a window where on-street parking is, you know, not allowed except for certain circumstances, as we will be working through with the policy. I just wanted to help assure folks that it's not just like a free-for-all, you know, because I'd heard some folks with legitimate concerns about that, saying, nope, no, they're still, this is a cool thing, it's helpful because of the access to the municipal services and things that we provide on our streets to keep them safe and clean and efficient and all that cool stuff. So I'm glad to see that those are still in there. I like the direction that we're headed with this, and the conversation we had earlier was helpful, and looking forward to fine-tuning and refining the policy that will help make this all happen, so thank you.
Councilmember Hannon, did you have something?
Councilmember Baker covered my points.
Oh, okay. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to open this up for public comment on this agenda item.
Do you want me to approach?
I do.
Excellent. So it's more of a question than a comment? And forgive me if I'm not up on how this discourse works, so...
So let me before...
Yes, please do.
I'll tell you that this discourse isn't really a discourse. You'll give your, you'll say your comments, they'll become part of the record, but we won't engage you in discussion. But you will be followed up with...
Okay.
A member of city staff or Council will follow up with you. So just state your name again, and...
Lisa Barrera, resident of Berkeley.
Perfect.
On Wiltshire.
Okay.
And I made a comment earlier about Wiltshire being parking on one side of the street, and the concerns my neighbors and I have about how any change to parking, including the overnight permitting, will impact us. And also, we were grateful to see the ordinance, the proposed ordinance for the parking prohibitions for signage and snow emergencies and such like that. So that's terrific. And it was really more of the operational questions that we had. And so you mentioned, and it was mentioned, that some of the policy or some of the on-street parking policy would be discussed later. And my question is, and I'm happy to get an answer later, is does that mean there will be additional ordinances? Or will this just be operational policy that's implemented by the City of Berkeley and put into place online where residents can see it and follow it and know it? And what the impact of these, the public parking policy or the on-street parking policy would be, and what that means for us? So broad question, love to know the answer, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing no, oh, seeing one.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Tom Stathopoulos. I live in Berkeley. I live in Catawba in Hamilton. Catawba doesn't allow on-street parking. I was present at the earlier meeting, and my opinion is, for what it's worth, I don't know how much of a real and imagined problem there is. I think the present policy that we've had up to now, with all its flaws, seems to be the lessest of the evils. I think for a lot of Berkeley residents, raising the fee when they forget the $50 is pretty steep. We can debate the cost, but I think the numbers run around $300, $500, whatever, for the parking pass. It's quite a bit of money, and since the majority appears to support no parking in the street overnight, I don't know. I know people have worked really hard on this policy. I'm not sure what, how bad the problem was, but I don't know that it's going to help. I think it's just going to, it may generate more money, but I think it's going to have some dissatisfaction, because you're going to have more cars in the street potentially, or maybe not, we'll find out. But I just wanted to say, I think the present policy, I think changing from two to five was a step in the right direction to make it easier for people. When they have to swap cars in the morning, it makes their life easier, you put it out if people have to get up early. So that I liked. I guess the other thing, we'll find out, but I'm kind of, I'm not really too thrilled with the policy, just one person's opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm closing public comment. Any, guess, Councilmember Hannon?
Yeah, so right now, we have, Public Safety has gone out and done surveys overnight, and we have about 150 very consistently that are parking on the street. So doing nothing still has people parking on the street. We're trying to tighten the screws, but still find a relief mechanism for some people that do have hardships that really don't have someplace to park. So it is a balancing act. You know, that policy will probably discuss at our next meeting in depth, and if this passes tonight. So that'll be the timeline for finally working out the last bit of the details of this, but it's, you know, part of the whole. And, you know, at some point, we have to put a stake in the ground, start collecting data. Will we get it right the first time? Probably not. We're going to evaluate it closely, watch it closely, monitor it closely. And it being a policy instead of an ordinance, we can be nimble to adapt and change as we learn. And, you know, but the goal for me at the end is to have fewer cars on the street at the end of the day than more. And I think this is moving us towards that direction.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you. I agree with those comments, and what we're talking about now is an ordinance that includes within it the policy that we will discuss later. So I just wanted to help. I know it's all techno mumbo jumbo stuff, but tonight, we're talking about the ordinance, which opens the door for us to pass policy. The cool thing about that is that, as was mentioned, we're going to learn, and we're going to understand what works, and we're going to understand where we, you know, that we just didn't quite, didn't quite fine-tune it enough. And we will, and it's, we'll have a swifter pathway to make changes to the policy, to bring additional benefits to the residents, to my neighbors, to us, right? Because we're all here from Berkeley. And so, again, just, you know, as far as all the mumbo jumbo goes, tonight's ordinance includes a lot of the mechanics and the basic things within which we can put the policy in place that will be those little things that we can fine-tune over time. And as mentioned, that's coming up at the next meeting.
Any other discussion or question from Council? Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on O 0724.
Hannon?
Yes.
Patterson?
No.
Bellani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes, the ordinance has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number four on tonight's agenda.
Close session, matter of considering convening in closed session at the conclusion of the regular meeting to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.268H.
Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Hannon. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Patterson?
Yes.
Bellani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. So Council will go into closed session after we adjourn this meeting. We will not be considering or voting on any other city business. So we'll do our communications, we'll adjourn this meeting, and then we'll go into closed session. So, Ms. Mitchell, who goes first?
Councilmember Bellani.
All right.
All right, thank you. For the Environmental Advisory Committee, there is no July meeting, so the next one is on August 15th on the second floor of the Public Safety Building. And then lots of announcements from the Berkeley Area Chamber. So first off, thank you to all of the participants and volunteers for the Street Art Festival that took place just a few weeks ago. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to go out there. Super fun event. As we all know, I am biased towards our four-legged friends, and my dog really also enjoyed the yappy hour addition there. Just, it's really great to see all the creativity of our residents and everyone around. Such a good time, a lot of hard work went into planning that, also including our own DPW, Public Safety, who worked to make it a safe and fun event for everybody. Speaking of safe and fun events, we also have Cruise Fest coming up soon, and there are still T-shirt sponsorship opportunities available. If you're interested, head to the Berkeley Chamber website, where there's more information there. Additionally, congratulations to all of the Berkeley Has Heart Photography winners, and thank you to all who participated in that. There's going to be another photography contest coming up this fall, I believe, in conjunction with all of the Boogly events that was for you, Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, I love, you've warmed my heart.
So keep your eyes peeled for that. I also wanted to just take a moment in a world full of lots of crazy things happening right now, to highlight some of the beauty that is in our own community. And I think this book has sorely not gotten anywhere near the publicity it deserves. So if you have not already seen it, it is called Berkeley Has Heart. You can buy copies of this for $5. I have already bought, I think, 10 of them and given them as gifts to all of my out-of-state family members. This book is the work of many of our residents and Chamber members. Big thanks to like Brett and Tara Heist, Katie Forte of June and December, who are really just the heart behind this book. I'm going to highlight a few things in here. There is, in case you are just in love with all of the murals in town, there's even listings of how you can get to all the murals, there's photos in here. It honestly just makes a great gift for all of your friends and family who don't live nearby to see how great Berkeley is. It would make a great housewarming president, or present, not precedent, for any of your new neighbors. I have a copy on my coffee table, so that way, when people come over, they can see it. It is just such a great book. Want to encourage everybody to take a look, and all of the proceeds go to support our schools. So the money is just going right back into the community, support arts. So if you have not had a chance to see this book, a lot of hard work, it's just a tiny little thing, but there's a lot of heart in here, so wanted to highlight that. And that's all I have, so...
Where can you buy the book?
Great question. So right now, the books are really only available kind of at like pop-ups at some of our events. If you are interested, reach out to me, Jay Bellani, at our Council email address, and I will make sure you get a copy. I will connect you to the Chamber. They're looking for ways to put these in more spaces. So if you haven't made it to one of the Chamber tents at an event, there's a good chance you missed it. But if you need help getting connected to books, let me know, and I will make sure it happens.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Very quickly, Parks and Rec will meet August 8th at 7:00 PM at the Community Center, and the Library Board will meet August 21st at 7:00 PM at the Library.
That's all I have.
Councilmember Baker?
Wow, that was fast.
Yeah, let's beat that.
Beat it, come on, beat it, Steve.
Oh, no, I can't. So I wish I could talk as fast as like that Micro Machines guy, remember those commercials? I'm dating myself. All right, so the Downtown Development Authority, DDA, met on July 10th, they talked about all sorts of awesome stuff. Congratulations to Olman's Health and Beauty in Coolidge, who received a $10,000 small business grant from American Express. Lots of other awesome stuff that I'm going to skip over. Downtownberkeley.com. Historical Committee met on July 9th. They debriefed on their engagement and participation with the residents at said events, you know, that have been happening. Art Bash, Pride Fest, Street Art Fest, it's been fantastic.[1785.66] And finally, it was poet laureate Matthew McConaughey, who once said, "The person who invented the hamburger was smart; the person who invented the cheeseburger was a genius." And I say that, you know, for all of you who celebrate, happy hamburger week. It's hamburger week. And if, you know, and like the not burger things are probably good, too. So, you know, I encourage you to help celebrate, as I will every day, about five times a day. And please hug somebody you love as you're eating a cheeseburger. That would be awesome.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
I didn't get the facepalm.
The Tree Board are on their summer break, though we still have a vacancy for a student position, if you know any students that are interested. And the zoning board of appeals heard five cases in July. They approved three variances for additions to homes and approved two new downtown murals. Their next meeting is Tuesday, August 13th, at 7:00 PM, with two cases for dimensional variances. And they also have two vacancies for alternate positions.
Thank you. Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On June 10th, the Committee for Technology and Engagement had our first official meeting. So thank you to Director Flora and Mr. Liska for their attendance. It was very spirited. Our members were excited to be back, and we are working on mission statement and areas where we can be of service to the city and all of those good things, so we're very excited. Our next meeting is tentative for September 11th. Ironic that we just got together, I'm going to take a month off, but I'm not judging, not judging, just a liaison. But it's a, it's a great group, and we're really excited. I want to give a very special shout-out to Karina Campbell and the Berkeley Burn. Couple of weekends ago, or last weekend, they had a phenomenal tournament, softball tournament, that took place all across the city. And what was great about it is it brought people in from other towns, and I think we had a couple of tournament winners, and some of our U's, forgive me, I don't remember them all, but it just got me to thinking that along with the Mom and Dad's Club and the Cubs and the Burn, you know, these are, these are really cool events in our community that bring people here and give us a chance to showcase. And so it was, it was fun, because I live 30 feet from the splash pad, to see some teams, whether, I don't know if it was a celebratory dip or a consolation dip, but when I see 10 girls all kind of post-game in the splash pad, that was pretty cool. Which brings me to this. I was out, it was one of those hot days, I was throwing with my daughter, and we decide, since we live so close to the splash pad, it was hot. She didn't, I did. I'm like, hey, I'm going to take advantage of it for once. So I went, it was really hot, I was really sweaty, I stuck my head in, and when I emerged, I had five or six people staring very disapprovingly at me. So I just want to say yes. I know I'm 6'4" and I'm 270, and I'm probably 40 years older than the average participant in the splash pad, but all you Berkeley residents, you go and enjoy that splash pad, and don't let little people shame you, and don't let moms shame you, because I'm going to tell you, as my first experience, I might become a regular, and I just want to make sure that people know that when you go out there, you may see me enjoying the splash pad. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Black. Councilmember Patterson?
I don't know what's happening tonight with the cheeseburger and splash pad. I mean, I'll probably go this week and have a cheeseburger in the splash pad, but I won't drop any crap.
I'll go with you.
I'll see you there.
Right.
I'll pick you up. So, July 22nd tomorrow, the Planning Commission meets here at 7:00 PM. The Beautification Committee did meet, and they'll meet again on the 31st. Last meeting, if you weren't able to attend it, they awarded the landscapes of the year. So they planted those signs, and with the rain, they've been popping up, there's nine signs popping up throughout the city for landscape of the year. So, look for those. Soon it'll be published, and everyone can go around and look at those. People taking lots of pride in their landscape. So it's pretty phenomenal that the Beautification Committee did that. So they will meet the 31st.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Guinegar?
Yes, I do have just a couple of quick things. So, last week, I had the opportunity to participate in the Summer Michigan Municipal Executives Conference. This is the group of people that largely represents your city managers, assistant city managers, aspiring city managers, students, et cetera. And as you all know, you happen to be looking for a city manager. I just wanted to let everybody know that there's interest. I think I've had a chance to talk with a number of you, but I did have a few people come up and approached me specifically about the position. I took the flyers up for James. And I do not have any more of those art booklets. Councilmember Vilani provided some for me, and those were very popular.
I can get you more.
Not just from the candidates. No, I'm good right now. James might want more. But the other thing, on a more serious note, and it kind of aligns with some of the things that we heard here, you know, we are in kind of crazy times. I can't even believe how many things that my kids have been through that I did not go through when I was their age. And I had the opportunity to lead a session with a good friend of mine and a couple other folks on, we called it Whole Wellness, really looking at meaning, or the meaning of life, spiritual, some might call it, social well-being, physical well-being, and emotional, and I have social here twice, but it's not supposed to be social, it's, I can't even think of it right now. I'm not advocating for it very well. The point being, pay attention to your friends and your family and other folks. I won't get into details on some of the things that came up in that session, but I learned things that I was not aware of, and you never know when somebody close to you is struggling with balancing one of those four or five areas of health and wellness. So pay attention, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crist?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There are two communications that I provided to council, which will be considered in closed session. Beyond that, I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Is Mr. Otto here? J.D. Otto? I just want to thank you for giving your time and energy and expertise to serving on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I appreciate your willingness to do that, and you're setting a great example. So if anybody's sitting here wondering, "I want to be on a board and commission," yes is the answer. And I know we have various openings from time to time, and they're always posted on the city website, so I just wanted to recognize you for being here tonight and to thank you. And then, it's been brought to my attention that the Berkeley Cares Community Food Pantry has lost some major funding. And this is troubling, because food insecurity is a very real thing. It's not just physical, but it's emotional and mental as well. And I've been thinking about this, and I've been talking to different people, and trying to, like, find a way for us to be impactful, right? So, I'm looking to start something new to support not only the sustainability of this important community asset, but to also raise awareness. I would like to also recognize in this moment the Berkeley First United Methodist Church, because they have so graciously allowed the food pantry to operate out of their lower levels. So shout-out to Zach Dunlap and his wife Rachel for being so involved in our community and to have met a need where they saw one. Our focus, though, I'm thinking, is, you know, time, talent, and treasure, emphasis on the treasure, because it really does take finances to make this pantry go. So I'm proposing that the month of October be Berkeley Cares Month. And I know that while we'll kick off this fundraising with a pancake breakfast, the date to be determined, I know there are some staff already who expressed interest. And what I'm really looking for, too, is not only from council, but from residents, how would you like to be involved, if you want to be involved? Because as a city, it's Berkeley, we care, right? So there's a lot of things to care about, and I'm just putting, shining a light on this one, because the food pantry does such a phenomenal job. And it's not just people in Berkeley who are hungry, it's the surrounding communities. So there's a sign-up genius. You can go to their website, ooh, Berkeleycares.com maybe, or Berkeleycares, we'll get that in a second. You can donate on that website, you can sign up to cover days. Sometimes people drop off food, and they do food collections, I believe it's every other Friday night. That's also on their website. There are other people that just do a sustainable gift, so they, I don't know, 20 bucks every other week, $1,000 a month, you know, the sky's the limit. But you can decide if that's a direction you want to go and what makes sense to you. So if any of my colleagues want to support this citywide effort, please reach out to me in the next, I don't know, week or so, and CC Nate as well, because I would really like, I mean, we have so many great things happening in our community, and when I see something struggling, that's been providing such a necessary resource, and the people that are on the board, the two women that started it, they work so hard, I think if we can give them a hand, in whatever way that we can, I'd like to do that. So thank you.
So I did look up the, it's Berkeleycaresfoodpantry.com, so it's all.
Berkeleycaresfoodpantry.com. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Councilmember Patterson and Councilmember Black. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
I can make a really good stack of flapjacks. I'm telling you.
Can't wait.
Yes. Whatever, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The Monday, July 24th, 22nd, 224 meeting of the council is adjourned.
But I'm going to use ones, because they're. That was incredible.[1255.63]